We're in trouble.
And welcome to March 12th, 2015, Longview City Council Meeting. I think we have some more chairs. We have a pretty nice audience tonight. Anybody like to come up and sit down? Anybody? Susan, you want to come sit down? You thought you were going to slide under the radar, right? And we got a place right up front just for you. Yeah, she does that to us at her meetings payback as heck. Payback as heck. Thank you. Man, alright. There we go. Alright. I hadn't done that since I was elected, man. It felt pretty good. Okay, so tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by the Life Bridge Christian Church Youth Group, KCK crew with Rhonda Witcher. Prayer by Jenna Height, pledge by all members of the group. Please come forward.
Please join me in a prayer. Lord, eternal God, we are about to begin our meeting and do so with the awareness that without your presence here at the center of our meeting and also within our lives, our work will be empty. Fill us with your wisdom and guidance. Gift us with your humor and humility and help us to accomplish the task set before us. Thank you for your guidance today. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, very good job. Y'all want to introduce yourselves to us? Okay, who wants to go first? Okay, this young lady right here, you want to go first in the black jacket? You don't? I don't blame you. Okay, let's go with the Kilgore Bulldog. Sean McGee, okay.
Aiden Smith.
Alright, yes ma'am.
Jenna Height.
Okay. Okay, and your name? Alright, well, thank y'all for coming. Good job. Okay. First item of business tonight is our citizen comment, Ms. Frances Ramsey.
Good evening. I wanted to speak about the animal shelter.
Weren't you here at the meeting before last, weren't you?
Yes.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if y'all paid-
I wasn't here, but I'm glad I'm here tonight.
I wasn't sure if y'all paid any attention to me, plus three minutes wasn't really enough time-
That's what everybody gets, so.
I know, but I had extra things I wanted to say. Anyway, I talked to my councilman from my district about two weeks ago because I saw an article in the paper that a groundbreaking ceremony was planned for the animal shelter. So I asked him if the $750,000 additional money was, had been raised for the construction costs because the lowest bid came in at $5,750,000 and only $5 million was available for construction. So he said, "No, the donors that were supposedly waiting in the wings to donate substantial amounts of money for the shelter were nowhere to be found." And he also said that the half million dollars that had been earmarked for the first year's expenses were going to be diverted to help pay for the additional-
Excuse me ma'am, would you mind, who is your councilman?
Richard Manley.
Oh, okay, continue.
Anyway, the $500,000 that had been earmarked for first year expenses was going to be diverted to help pay for the additional $750,000 in construction costs. So if that's done, then the estimated, or the shortfall based on your pro forma figures would be $730,000 rather than $230,000 for your first year operation. I believe that if the money is not available for the construction costs and for the operating cost, that this project should be put on hold until the money is available. Another reason to postpone construction is a downturn in the local economy because of the oil field slowdown. In fact, Mayor Dean, you were quoted in yesterday's paper talking about the problems with the downturn in the oil field and how that was directly going to affect revenues for the city. And then another reason to postpone the project is the fact that the city council will be going through a major turnover in the May elections. At least three councilmen and possibly four will be new to the city council and it just doesn't seem right for the present council to start a multimillion dollar project and then leave and let someone else figure it out. So I just beg you to reconsider this project and to postpone any further work until a more definite financial plan can be developed.
Okay, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
And let me address a few of your concerns. And I'm happy today to announce the first donation of $100,000 to the construction of the animal shelter. I'd like to thank Alicia and Ella Blue Nolte for their donation today. It is our initial donation. We're excited about the other commitments that we have. And Ms. Ramsey, we had many public meetings about this. I don't remember ever seeing you at any of them to complain or to voice that you were in, not in support. This project has been funded. This project is started. And ma'am, I hate to sound the wrong way, but this train has left the station. So you can continue to come all you want to talk about it, but that train's left the track. Now what we're doing, you've had your turn, now it's mine. Now what we're going to do is we're going to continue to actively pursue, which we are, the donations from the private sector which are now starting to come in as evidenced today by the first $100,000 donation. So thank you for being here, and Ms.-
I'm not going to get into words, but I just want to say that she completely misrepresented what I had to say with regard to where we are in the process.
Okay, okay, the next is Mr. or Ms., I'm sorry, Jackie Tolbert. Good afternoon, Ms. Tolbert.
Good afternoon. I'm Jacqueline Tolbert. I've been a homeowner in Longview for some 42 years. I reside on the north side, on the south side. Having worked in Houston from 1994 to 2013, I returned to live in my Longview home when a visit turned to a permanent stay when I suffered a stroke. Before I moved to Houston, I was actively involved in the community, serving on the Longview Women's Advisory Committee and in an organization called Community Challenge, sponsor of Operation Clean Sweep. It did credible work on the south side. It was a brainchild of Brenda Yoda. When a youngster in Longview was killed, Community Challenge organized a forum to teach our youth to live peacefully and productively. It also featured a community rally. We called it Project Hope. I begin with that because I want you to know that I'm a person who's bent is to roll up my sleeves and to make a difference wherever I can. I have become aware of the increased crime rate in Longview, especially on the south side. And I am saddened when I drive through areas in my neighborhood that look very different from the way they looked in 1994. The landscape of South Longview is peppered with abandoned and dilapidated houses, overgrown lots, junk cars, unkempt property, and even some graffiti. I had a theory as to why the increase in crime and my research has validated that theory. Physical deterioration is a significant factor. It cannot be marched away. Vigils will not make it disappear. Prayers will help, but they must be followed by actions of residents not only in South Longview, but all Longview. As a nation, we believe that a threat to freedom anywhere is a threat to freedom everywhere. So we have fought in Vietnam, in Afghanistan. With a similar conviction, we must join forces and fight the deterioration in any community in Longview. My research took me to the National Institute of Justice. They recommend Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, CPTED, which focuses on crimes, the areas in which crime occurs, and techniques on reducing vulnerability in these settings. Controlling physical deterioration reduces offenders' perceptions that areas are vulnerable to crime or that residents either are too afraid or too complacent-
Your time's expired. Are you going to need a whole bunch more because of so? Okay, let me, first of all, thank you for being here. You're saying exactly what we said Friday as the third leg of our strategy. We have ordinances that we have got to go back to, including substandard housing and the nuisance abatement, which is a state statute, okay? And the third thing is to address these, I hate to use it, but I will, the slum lords, okay? They've got to come up to a better standard. And that is a substandard structure ordinance that has to be looked at by this council and soon in order to bring them up to the standard to help eliminate exactly what you're talking about. So I want to thank you for coming here. Roll your sleeves up. We need all the help we can get.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you ma'am. Yes ma'am.
Ms. Tolbert, before you leave, thank you for being here. It's really delightful to see you here. I'm encouraged as we hear the words "Community Challenge." That goes back to the community mobilization model that we spoke about as well on Friday. We're moving back in that direction and getting it solid. But as the mayor just stated, we need you. We need your brain. So thank you so much for being here.
You said, "Actions speak louder than words." You're absolutely right.
That's right. Let's go to work.
We can do all the talking in the world, but we need help. Thank you ma'am. Appreciate it. Glad to see you back home, too. Okay. Well, I'll continue on to my computer. It's the technology, isn't it a wonderful thing? Okay, so we're going to move to the next item, which is the Comprehensive Plan. And that's to consider ordinance adopting the Comprehensive Plan. And Mr. Keith Honey?
Good evening. Mayor Dean, City Manager Willard, members of the city council, staff and citizens. I'm here on behalf of the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee to recommend your approval and acceptance of Longview's 2015 Comprehensive Plan. At your behest, this planning process began in the fall of 2013, almost 18 months ago. And with the help of literally thousands of Longview citizens, a very dedicated advisory committee and city staff and a professional, experienced consultant, I believe and I hope you will agree, we now have exactly what you asked for, a comprehensive plan that maps Longview's future course for the next 15 to 20 years. I would be remiss if I didn't give some special thanks to several who have gone above and beyond in working to develop this plan. First, former Mayor Earl Roberts, who was largely responsible for forming the team that became the advisory committee. I know that we are all grateful for Earl's many contributions to our community and we all deeply were saddened to lose him as the chairman of this committee. But I believe his legacy will live on in this document. Many thanks to you, Mayor Dean, and you, the city council, for your wisdom and vision in initiating this plan. Special thanks to council liaison, Richard Manley, for all his support and guidance throughout the process. To the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, many of whom are here tonight, and I'd like to ask them to stand. Please be recognized. They have been the rudder of the ship to keep the process on track and provide valuable input and direction. They all invested many volunteer hours to ensure we came out of this process with a document that would stand the test of time and provide us with a roadmap to our future, including input from all sectors and segments of our community. To the city staff who worked hand in hand with the committee throughout the process, providing their much-needed input, wisdom and administrative support. A special thanks to City Manager Willard, Assistant Manager Bonds, and Assistant to the City Manager Sean Hera for their above and beyond efforts. To our consultant, Freezin Nichols, and particularly Wendy Shabey and Chad Como, who provided their excellent knowledge and experience to Longview's particular circumstances, resulting in what I believe is a thorough and complete plan for our city. As initially scoped, the Comprehensive Plan is a long-range planning tool that is intended to help direct the physical growth and development of our city while also focusing on the overall vision for Longview to be a livable and economically vibrant community. The planning process was broken down into three phases. Phase one focused on preparing a community snapshot and visioning. Phase two keyed on developing recommendations in several broad strategic areas of community growth and vitality. And phase three wrapped up with formulation of an implementation plan, including action steps in the final report. Know that this planning process has been one in which we have tried to take every possible step to ensure that this plan reflects the wisdom and wishes of the citizens of Longview. Over 2,500 people gave their input via an online survey. Over 600 attended two public meetings held to review and discuss the plan during its development. And the committee members and staff heard direct feedback and input from many of their friends, neighbors and contacts. Based largely on the input received, the advisory committee developed a vision statement that would form the very foundation for the remainder of the plan. That vision is for Longview to be a premier community promoting education, business opportunities and cultural diversity, capitalizing on our heritage and natural beauty, focusing on families and healthy living and creating a safe, welcoming environment that attracts vibrant people to call Longview home. Building upon this vision statement during phase two of the process, approximately 130 goals and objectives were identified. The committee further focused these into 27 items to be considered the city's top priorities for implementation. Now, to give you a little more in-depth look at the plan, several of the key recommendations, let me introduce Wendy Shabey, the project manager for Freezin Nichols.
Keith, before you move, let me just say this. When we first started the idea of the Comprehensive Plan, matter of fact, Mayor Roberts and I sat down together and he was so excited about, you know, being the chairman of this particular project. He went straight to work with names of people to call and, I mean, he was incredible. And I miss him to this day like we all do. But when he became ill and felt like he was not going to be able to devote the time, his very first question, "You think Keith Honey will do the job?" "Yeah, Earl," I said. "God bless him. He's always stepped up in the past." So we owe you a lot of gratitude for stepping up. Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, thank you. I too would echo the gratitude towards Keith. He was a fantastic leader as well as all the committee, gave great input. City staff was fantastic and so I do echo your words that you made it easy on us because the truth-
Should we get a discount? We like that. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Yeah, I know, I know. We, it really was a plan that was built by your community. And that's why I say it is great for us as consultants, we can come in and have great ideas and push some issues and I think we did. But it was fantastic to get something that really represents, I believe, the majority of your community. Just very quickly, I know you've heard several presentations on this. You've probably read the plan. It's been on the website for a while. It's been fairly public. Actually, it's been very public. And so I don't want to go through much, but for the person who in here that might have seen it for the first time, there are 10 chapters to the plan. It covers the community snapshot and where you are. Also, the long view, which is all the goals and objectives and strategies that Keith talked about. We cover the future land use, transportation and circulation, our parks, public facilities, neighborhood and community livability, growth management, economic development, and then of course, the implementation. Just to go through a few of the key items in that. Number one, we looked at the complete land use for all of the city and this truly does represent those recommendations. We looked at not only everything within the city limits, but also within the ETJ to come up with the new future land use. One of the key objectives coming out of that was to focus on the core of your city. We know that there is a lot of growth right now, particularly to the north. I wouldn't stop that at all. That's good for the city, but what I would concentrate on and what I would spend your money and incentives towards is that south of Highway 80 and down to your corridor. That was a big consensus within the plan to focus back on that core of what we're trying to accomplish. To that end, downtown was a really big deal. This is, there was something that people wanted to see more focus on the downtown area. You've done a lot. You've done a lot of the strategies and implementation on your roadways there. But to continue to building on that and create that sense of place within your downtown area. Sidewalks and bike mobility was also a big thing that we heard coming out of this. You have done a really good job of planning for the car in Longview. Your roads are good. You've got good transportation. With the exception of a few connectivity issues and some of, you know, some slight recommendations towards transportation, what we really think you ought to do is move to a more multimodal community that focuses more on bikes and sidewalks, particularly on some key streets that we think could be very pedestrian friendly. To the lady's point that spoke earlier, this was exactly one of the recommendations within the Comprehensive Plan, was to focus on property maintenance and code, rehabilitation, facade enhancements and so on. So much of your city is seen from the automobile and along these major corridors and you have too many dilapidated buildings, vacant buildings that need to come down. And so continuation of your demolition of dilapidated structures is one of those key ideas that's important for those that come drive through the city. If there was one thing that I would say your public wants, it is trails, trails and more trails, a focus on parks, not only updating your existing parks, but also finishing your master plan of the current parks and then just more parkland in general. Also, the enhancement of corridors and gateways, particularly again from the south, from 31, from I-20 down Marbury and High and Highway 80. Those are all very important corridors and so enhancing that for those experience. Additionally, focusing on growth management. You have and actually need the ability to probably annex some areas. You probably need to do that particularly on those corridors. And that's really where we focused our growth management recommendations were along those key corridors for the very reasons that we want to be able to make sure that we are ensuring the highest quality and standards along those. And also, you have some need for expansion of some of your city facilities, not only fire departments, but your, some of your city departments, your parks department, new fire and police training center. There is a need that as you grow to continue to expand some of those facilities. And I know you can't read this slide, but it's probably the most important part of the entire plan and that is your implementation plan. And everything that we did, we did it based on that vision that Keith read and then goals and then objectives and then there is pages of strategies which are all those action items to achieve that vision that we're hoping for. All of this is on the webpage. It has been and it's under the download link. You will see the document and also all of the appendices that go with it. And we provided copies of all that to you. So again, I want to just tell you how much we appreciate this. We enjoyed working with the city. We enjoyed working with the committee. Councilmember Manley and Chair Keith Honey, the city manager's office, you've all been fantastic. You have a great community that you should be really proud of and I'm very excited to see what happens for you in the future.
Well, I want to tell you also, Ms. Shabey, thank you very much for your leadership. You were very patient, cardio, but also pretty focused on keeping us in a direction. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. So what's next? And as Wendy just said, assuming you approve the plan tonight, I guess the focus and energy will naturally move to implementation. How do we take these recommendations, move them from dreams and vision to reality? A large part of that responsibility for successfully implementing the plan will fall on your shoulders as the elected leadership of our community. Moreover, it will require day-to-day commitment from the city staff, appointed officials and boards, organizations like LeadCo and the Chamber of Commerce and in reality, all of Longview's citizens. Additionally, the advisory committee recommends that you appoint a standing committee comprised of council representatives, city staff and citizens to regularly review the plan for relevance, monitor progress and report back to you and the community regarding their findings. I hope you can see that there's been a tremendous amount of work done on this plan and it's been thought out, a caring plan that's been developed by caring people. I'm very grateful to all of those who've taken time to weigh in with their opinions and beliefs. It's truly been gratifying to me to see how many of our fellow citizens care about Longview's future. On a personal note, it's been an honor and a pleasure for me to serve on the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee with some of Longview's best, brightest and most caring citizens. Thanks for giving me that opportunity. Now, I wholeheartedly recommend your acceptance and approval of this, our community's roadmap to the future, Longview's 2015 Comprehensive Plan. Thanks very much.
Let me, we're going to go to a public hearing in just a second, but one of the very important things when we set about putting together a comprehensive plan in place was it's to be a roadmap. It's to be a compass. It's to be, you know, a guide for the elected officials. And we've had a number of those efforts, Vision 2010, Vision 2020 and unfortunately, sometimes those efforts, you know, ended up on a book rack somewhere. But I think the key difference this go-around was the fact that we had how many different public hearings?
public hearings, the public input that went into this.
Right.
Now, you know, if I'm an elected official and I've got this plan that the public has said, "This is what we see for the future," to me, that's very important and I'm engaged from that level, and to do different to me would be not the right decision to make. So this is very important, is the implementation of this plan, and it's going to take time, okay? It's going to take time, and it always comes back to, how do you pay for the things? But this community can figure out how to do those things, and we're excited about that. So, okay, we're going to go to a, does anybody else have any comments before we go to public hearing? Okay, then we'll go to public hearing, let's see, public hearing is now open. I have a few speaker cards, and let me say this, if you'd like to say something regarding the comprehensive plan and you didn't get a chance to fill out a card, please don't hesitate to come forward and we'll get you to fill out a card later. Ed Moore first.
I got the public hearing concept down-
You got it?
-good this time.
You're a quick learner.
Let me offer my sincere thanks to Keith and your group for the fantastic work they've done. I know Earl Roberts is smiling down from heaven, saying, "Well done, guys." We cannot let this plan gather dust on a shelf. The city and the community has put too much into this to let it gather dust. Let's implement the procedural things, the things that we can do inexpensively first. You know, I urge the council and future councils to carefully study the priorities and the recommendations that came out of this plan, be fiscally prudent about it, and have additional community input. We now need to see this plan come to life, and it's up to you guys up there to do it. Thanks.
Thanks Ed.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Suzanne Brown, and I'm the Advocacy and Communications Director for the Longview Chamber of Commerce at 410 North Center Street, Longview, Texas. Thank you for this opportunity for comments regarding the comprehensive plan. The chamber has played an important role in driving the conversation toward a master plan for moving the city forward. Researching communities that looked like ours, that had a successful revitalization experience, the chamber created three intercity trips. Through the intercity trips to Chattanooga, Tennessee, Fort Collins, Colorado, and Greenville, South Carolina, we brought together city leaders, planners and developers to see the reality of possibility. The chamber coordinated supporters to speak for the passage of the comprehensive plan at the planning and zoning meeting last month, and we are here tonight to support moving this plan forward for Longview. We fully support the approval of this comprehensive plan. It is the foundation for building the city's future, sets the course for action. When city and community leaders work together and combine their efforts, we can move things forward. We believe Longview is at a pivotal point in its development. The projects outlined in the comprehensive plan describe the environment for attracting talent for area businesses and industry, and make Longview an even greater place to live, work and play. At the intercity visit in Greenville, South Carolina last fall, we were excited to find similarities between Longview and its current state and Greenville during its transition. We are on our way to creating a unique and memorable city, but it is crucial that we adopt a long-term plan of action for success. I brought some words of wisdom back from Greenville, from the folks that have gone through this, the leaders, the hard-working folks that made their revitalization occur, here are some words of wisdom. The secret to Greenville's success wasn't really a secret. It was planning, it was implementing, it was bringing people together who believed and listening to those who didn't believe. It was changing people's minds. It was about creating a vision and making it happen. It wasn't one thing that happened, but when one thing did happen, they pushed for something more. That is the key to the future. We can't rest on what we have done and expect it to remain prosperous. We can't be complacent. We have to be looking and thinking about what will come next. The lesson of all of this is not to lose sight of the big picture. Cities tend to be bogged down in minutia and forget to think about what will make their city better in the long run. The challenge is to keep trying and promoting new ideas. You cannot-